I'd like to call to order the Cuyahoga County Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, September 25th. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a moment of silence, we'd like to remember Officer Jason Gresko of the Willoughby Police Department and all of the safety personnel who have fallen in the line of duty. Item five on our agenda is public comment related to the agenda. Has anyone signed in for public comment?
Madam Chair, Mr. Ryan Martin had signed in to address council. However, he unexpectedly had to leave. He did provide written testimony to council, and first thing in the morning, I will distribute that to all council members.
I thank you. Anyone else?
No, Madam Chair. No one else has signed in to speak as it relates to an agenda item.
Is your item related to an agenda item?
At least so.
Okay, come on up. You should have signed in, but come on up.
Save the library?
Okay. Come on.
I do have two women who have signed in to speak, but it was for the "Save the Library." I know that that was an agenda.
This is for our organization.
Okay. What is your -- what will you be addressing council regarding?
About the Cuyahoga County Public Library.
It's not an agenda item, so we'll take you at the end, okay?
Right.
All right. The minute, anyone else? All right, the items for the -- I'm sorry, the minutes of the meeting of September 11th, 2012, have been circulated. I hope everyone has had an opportunity to review them, and if so, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as circulated.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conwell and seconded by Mr. Brady. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Item seven, my only announcement this evening is that item 15 on the agenda is an item that has to go into executive session, and we will do it at the end of all of the agenda items. Mr. Fitzgerald? Is he here?
He has stepped out.
And I don't want to say I cut him off, so. I never do that. We can actually do another item and have him come back in. We'll just keep going. Item nine -- oh, here he comes. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you for waiting for me. I'll be -- I have to say something now, since you waited for me. I wasn't --
Okay. Well, that's okay. You don't have to say anything.
Well, thank you, but I've got a couple of things, I guess, just quickly. One is, I had the pleasure, actually, last week, took a vacation to Ireland, but I did a little bit of public business. I just want to invite the council to participate with me in welcoming the head of the Irish Republic when he visits here on October 12th and 13th. Prime Minister of Ireland, Enda Kenny, will be here. As probably most of you know, he has a lot of connections to the greater Cleveland area. He's a resident of County Mayo, which is where a majority of the Irish population of Cleveland hails from, and so he just has a lot of connections here. And actually, traveling with me on that trip were some local CEOs, and it actually does make sense to have kind of an economic -- some economic understanding with the Republic of Ireland. It's a good gateway to the European market and the 500 million residents and consumers that they have there, and there actually were some business deals that I think we'll be able to announce in the next month or two. So I think it makes sense for us, as a county, to have some kind of formal arrangement with County Mayo, actually, and I may be proposing that in time for his visit here. It's a rare event that the greater Cleveland area actually hosts a foreign head of state. It'll be the first time that President of Ireland -- or, I'm sorry, Prime Minister of Ireland has ever been to the Cleveland area, so it'll be a special time for that reason. One other just policy matter that we're dealing with this week on a much more somber note, about three weeks ago, I got some very disturbing information from our medical examiner, Dr. Gilson, during a cabinet meeting. He was talking about the alarming increases -- increase in the number of deaths by heroin overdose. We're at about -- just for the first six months of 2012, we were at about 80 deaths in Cuyahoga County. That -- we'd be on pace to have 160 for the year, which is about three times more than it was five or six years ago. The trend has been -- it has been trending upwards every single year, and it has become kind of a -- the trend is quite clear that, as we all know, there had been this increase in the number of individuals who are abusing opiates via prescription drugs, and this has now become, unfortunately, the destination for some of them, as it has become more difficult and more expensive to obtain and abuse prescription drugs. That's a good thing. Unfortunately, the low-cost alternative for some of those addicts, then, is heroin. It isn't a problem that can be isolated to any one particular part of the county. It does trend towards younger demographics, but we're trying -- we're going to launch a special effort, and we're going to be talking about it at a press conference this week, and talking about trying to bring together the educational community, the medical community, and the law enforcement community to talk about how we can address this problem and come up with any best practices strategies that we can implement. The other thing that Dr. Gilson is doing, that I think he really deserves to be commended about, is he's not just treating these 80 deaths as statistics. He's going back and really doing a retrospective on what happened in that person's life, where there could have been a successful intervention and there wasn't. So as opposed to just talking about the statistics, which are alarming, who were those people? How did it happen? And what lessons can be learned from that? Where could we have intervened? Where could either a family member, or a physician, or a loved one, or a teacher, or a social worker, where and when and how could somebody have intervened to have a different outcome? So I think this is the -- this is just the beginning of this discussion that we should have, and we should be having it openly. And I would invite council to follow up and expand and expound upon what we talked about this week through your Public Safety Committee, or whatever committees you think would be appropriate, as we start to have this sad but very necessary conversation.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I'd certainly like to work with you on that, because I've been involved with Community Action Against Addiction, which is a methadone treatment program for about 30 years.
Excellent.
So I'm aware of the problem, and yeah, I'd like to work with you on that, because it is a very, very serious problem.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. The contracts signed by the executive are attached to the agenda for review, for those who have an interest. Item nine, reception of reports submitted to the council. By virtue of the Ohio Revised Code, the Cuyahoga County Veterans Service Commission has to submit their budget to the council. They have done so, and we have attached a copy of that to the agenda for review, and basically, there's not a lot we can do about it, but we can take a look at it and review it, and if there's any items, we can question about that. We have several changes to the agenda, and Mr. Miller is prepared to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Madam President, I move to amend the agenda by adding two items, to add motion number 2012-0027, which is the appointments to the Metro Health Board of Trustees, Samuel R. Houston and Sharon Sobel Jordan, to be added to the agenda as item 10C, and also resolution 2012-0213, the 12th in a series of items related to the issuance of bonds, and that is to be added to the agenda as item number 16S.
All right, so motion by Mr. Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schron. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, and the agenda is so amended. Item 10, consideration of motion of council for first reading and referral to committee.
Motion number 2012-0025, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of individuals to serve on the Cuyahoga County Charter Review Commission, and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective for the individuals as printed on the agenda, items 10A, 1 through 9.
Move to adopt.
It's referred to committee.
Refer to committee. That's okay.
I just knew the names, and they're great guys. And ladies, too.
All right, we refer that to the Human Resources Committee, and this Conwell bill will be having on the agenda for her committee. All right, item 0026.
Motion number 2012-0026, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Jan L. Roller to serve on the Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority Board of Directors, and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective.
This may or go to the Human Resources Committee? And then item C.
Reading into the record, the item that was approved to be walked on the agenda, motion number 2012-0027, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of various individuals to serve on the Metro Health System Board of Trustees, and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective. The two individuals being appointed are Samuel R. Houston and Sharon Sobel Jordan. The sponsor is Council President Conley.
And it'll go to Human Resources. All right, item 11, committee report and consideration of a motion of council for second reading under suspension of the rules. We need a motion pursuant to Rule 9D to suspend the third reading, because this has already gone to committee, and we've had two readings. Ms. Simon.
We suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher, suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Item 0024.
Motion number 2012-0024, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of individuals to serve on the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board of Cuyahoga County, and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective. The individuals appointed to serve are Stephanie J. Falkrick, Mary O. Boyle, William J. Tobin, and Elsie Caraballo.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion on these items?
Madam Chair, the Human Resources Appointments and Equity Committee met with each appointee on September 20th in open committee. Each person expressed a full commitment to the success of the Adams Board mission, and this committee recommends passage of these individuals for confirmation.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of making the appointments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and congratulations to Ms. Falkrick, Ms. Boyle, Mr. Tobin, and Ms. Caraballo. Item 12, consideration of resolution of council for first reading and referral to committee.
Resolution number 2012-0190, a resolution approving the city of Cleveland to retain a certain city land bank parcel for devotion to public use to construct a new third district police station, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or goes to the Finance Committee?
Resolution number 2012-0212, a resolution adopting the 2013 through 2028 Solid Waste Management Plan update for the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste Management District, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
And Ms. Rogers, I neglected to indicate which committee we were going to send this to.
Environment and Sustainability.
Okay, if that's okay. And this will go to Mr. Rogers' Committee in Environment and Sustainability. All right, item 13, consideration of an ordinance of council for third reading adoption. We need a motion to suspend both Rules 9D and 12A.
I move we suspend the rules. Third reading, so there are no rules. It's just up for adoption.
Yeah, I had my stuff all together, and we changed everything. Okay, sorry. Item 0022.
Ordinance number 2012-0022, an ordinance designating an additional 5% of all collections of delinquent real property, personal property, and manufactured and mobile home taxes and assessments to be deposited in the Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection Fund, and appropriating such amount to the use of the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Brady. Is there any discussion on this?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just for the record, as I did last time we discussed this matter last year, I will not be supporting this, not because I don't believe in the Michigan Land Bank, but because the current funding -- the D-TAN funding source, in my opinion, is a more true representation of the collections within the county, and as such, switched to a D-TAN would take money -- more money out of our municipalities, schools, and libraries, and so for that reason, I will be -- I will not be supporting this ordinance.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Germana.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Schron.
Yes.
Ms. Conwell.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
No.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
The ayes have it.
All right. Item 14, consideration of a resolution for first reading under suspension of the rules. Now, we need a motion pursuant to Rule 9D and 12A to suspend the rules for these budgetary changes.
We suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Resolution number 2012-0191, a resolution amending the 2012-2013 biennial operating budget for 2012 by providing for additional fiscal appropriations from the General Fund and other funding sources, for appropriation transfers between budget accounts, and for cash transfers between budgetary funds, in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. Conwell, and I believe that Mr. Miller has a motion to amend.
Madam President, I do move to amend, and the amendment is a technical amendment. It's been passed out as a single sheet, and there simply is a transposition in one of the index codes listed under item F, the changes requested by Budget and Management.
All right, is there a second on the motion to amend?
So move. Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Schron. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The resolution is amended. Is there any discussion on the amendment on merits?
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President, my colleague, this item contains mainly routine transfers, generally appropriations of grants, and routine allocations of levy dollars. There are three items of note. The $500,000 appropriation is made for the first phase of the scholarship program. This money comes from the reserve and the general fund provided for this purpose. And second, there is an appropriation of $1.2 million for radios for the Sheriff's Department. Funding will come from the upcoming general obligation bond issue. And finally, there is an appropriation of $760,000 in federal funds to do an environmental assessment of the county airport properties, and a 10% local match of about $85,000 will be required. I ask for your support of the resolution.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, item 15, consideration of resolutions for first reading adoption under suspension of the rules, and this is the item that's going to go to executive session, so we're going to hold that till the end. Item 16, consideration of resolutions for first reading and referral to committee.
Resolution number 2012-0194, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires reconstruction of Columbia Road, Cook Road, Mapleway Drive, River Road, and Water Street in the city of Olmsted Falls and Olmsted Township. Total estimated construction cost $576,792. Finding that special assessments will neither be levied nor collected to pay for any part of the county's cost of said improvement, and authorizing the county executive to enter into agreements of cooperation with said municipality and township in connection with said project.
This may or go to Public Works.
Resolution number 2012-0195, a resolution making an award on requisition number 23208 to Mead &amp; Hunt Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $897,252.28 for an environmental assessment study of the Cuyahoga County Airport for improvements included in the master plan update and future airport layout plan, authorizing the county executive to execute the contract and all other documents consistent with said award in this resolution, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to Mr. Rogers' Environmental Studies Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0196, a resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $15,100,000 County of Cuyahoga, Ohio Economic Development Refunding Revenue Bonds University School Project in two or more series for the purpose of refunding the remaining outstanding principal amount of the $15,845,000 County of Cuyahoga, Ohio Economic Development Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2009 University School Project, which were issued to provide funds to assist university school in the refinancing of costs of a project within the meaning of Chapter 165 Ohio Revised Code. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement pertaining to the project and a trust indenture securing the payment of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain other documents and actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to Economic Development.
Resolution number 2012-0197, a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Village of North Randall for participation in the Cuyahoga County Benefits Regionalization Program for the period September 1, 2012 through December 31, 2014, and authorizing the county executive to execute the agreement and all other documents consistent with this resolution.
I look on Human Resources.
Resolution number 2012-0198, a resolution making an award on requisition number 24643 to Cleveland Communications Incorporated in the amount of $1,204,191.88 for the purchase of 56 Harris Unity Mobile and 190 portable multiband radios and accessories for the county sheriff's office, authorizing the county executive to execute the contract and all other documents consistent with said award and this resolution.
Let's go to Public Safety.
Resolution number 2012-0199, a resolution authorizing an amendment to contract number CE 100688 with Goodwill Industries of Greater Cleveland and East Central Ohio Incorporated for staffing, for unpaid work experience, and community service programs for Ohio Works' first cash recipients for the period October 1, 2010 through September 30, 2012, to extend the time period to September 30, 2013, and for additional funds in the amount of $571,550, authorizing the county executive to execute the amendment and all other documents consistent with this resolution, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to Health and Human Services.
Resolution number 2012-0200, a resolution approving a license fee of $20 for all dogs effective December 1, 2012, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0201, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $39,721,000 to provide funds to pay costs of constructing, adding to remodeling, renovating, rehabilitating, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving buildings, facilities, and structures for county offices and functions, and improving and equipping sites for such buildings, facilities, and structures, in each case, together with all necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or goes to the Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0202, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the -- in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $21,350,000 to provide funds to pay costs of constructing, adding to remodeling, renovating, rehabilitating, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving county jail, correctional, and juvenile detention facilities, and improving sites for those facilities, in each case, together with all necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to the Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0203, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $1,205,000 to provide funds to pay costs of acquiring radios and other communications equipment, together with all necessary appurtenances for use and carrying out functions of the Sheriff's Department, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to the Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0204, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $880,000 to provide funds to pay costs of improving the county fairgrounds by acquiring, constructing, and installing a wind turbine and related equipment to provide electric power to the fairgrounds, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to the Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0205, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $847,000 to provide funds to pay costs of reconstructing, resurfacing, and otherwise improving and equipping runways at the county airport, together with necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
The Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0206, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $36,925,000 to advance refund at a lower interest cost, all or a portion of the $36,925,000 of the county's outstanding county building and facilities bonds, Series 2004, that are stated to mature on December 1st in each of the years from 2015 through 2024, all of which were issued as a part of a consolidated issue of capital improvement bonds, Series 2004, dated as of September 15, 2004, to pay costs of acquiring, constructing, adding to remodeling, renovating, rehabilitating, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving buildings, facilities, and structures for county offices and functions, and acquiring, improving, and equipping sites for such buildings, facilities, and structures, in each case, together with all necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This may or go to the Finance Committee.
Resolution number 2012-0207, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $8,975,000 to advance refund at a lower interest cost, all or a portion of the $8,975,000 of the county's outstanding county correctional and detention facilities improvement bonds, Series 2004, that are stated to mature on December 1st in each year of the years from 2015 through 2022, all of which were issued as a part of a consolidated issue of capital improvement bonds, Series 2004, dated as of September 15, 2004, to pay costs of acquiring, constructing, adding to remodeling, renovating, rehabilitating, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving county jail, correctional, and juvenile detention facilities, and acquiring and improving sites for those facilities, in each case, together with all necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. Resolution number 2012-0208, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $1,065,000 to advance refund at a lower interest cost, all or a portion of the $1,065,000 of the county's outstanding capital improvement bonds, Series 2004. bonds, Series two thousand four, Orange Place Extension Project, that are stated to mature on December first in each of the years from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-four, all of which were issued as a part of a consolidated issue of capital improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, dated as of September fifteen, two thousand four, to provide funds to pay the county's portion of the cost of improving Orange Place in cooperation with the Village of Orange Village by grading, draining, curbing, paving, and constructing sidewalks, storm and sanitary sewers, and water lines, in each case, together with the necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Finance Committee?
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero two zero nine, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of four hundred forty thousand dollars to advance refund at a lower interest cost, all or a portion of the four hundred forty thousand dollars of the county's outstanding sewer district improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, county improvement number fourteen sixty, Phase One, that are stated to mature on December first in each of the years from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-two, all of which were issued as a part of a consolidated issue of capital improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, dated as of September fifteen, two thousand four, to provide funds in anticipation of the collection of special assessments thereto forelevied, to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of constructing county improvement number fourteen sixty, Phase One, being water lines and five roads in County Sewer District Number fourteen in Olmsted Township, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Finance Committee?
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero two one zero, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of ninety thousand dollars to advance refund at a lower interest cost, all or a portion of the ninety thousand dollars of the county's outstanding sewer district improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, county improvement number fourteen sixty, Phase Two, that are stated to mature on December first in each of the years from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-four, all of which were issued as a part of a consolidated issue of capital improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, dated as of September fifteen, two thousand four, to provide funds in anticipation of the collection of special assessments thereto forelevied, to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of constructing county improvement number fourteen sixty, Phase Two, a twelve-inch water line and appurtenances in Sharp Road from Sprague Road to Shady Road in County Sewer District Number fourteen in Olmsted Township, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Finance Committee?
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero two one one, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of one hundred ten thousand dollars to advance refund at a lower interest cost, all or a portion of the one hundred ten thousand dollars of the county's outstanding sewer district improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, county water improvement number twenty-three hundred, that are stated to mature on December first in each of the years from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-two, all of which were issued as a part of a consolidated issue of capital improvement bonds, Series two thousand four, dated as of September fifteen, two thousand four, to provide funds in anticipation of the collection of special assessments thereto forelevied, to pay the property owner's portion of the cost of constructing county water improvement number twenty-three hundred in County Sewer District Number twenty-three in Chagrin Falls Township, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Finance Committee?
Reading into the record as was approved in the change in the agenda from council, resolution number two thousand twelve zero two one three, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of two million twenty thousand dollars to provide funds for the county's contribution to the acquisition and equipping of the Village of Highland Hills Municipal Building, and the renovation and construction and reconstruction of improvements thereto, including necessary appurtenances thereto, which building is to be used jointly by the village and the county as a community center for governmental and civic purposes in accordance with a cooperative agreement between the village and the county, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. This resolution is sponsored by the county executive Fitzgerald Fiscal Officer, Office of Budget and Management, and the bond counsel is Squire Sanders and Dempsey.
This will go to the Finance Committee. I'd like to thank Ms. Sanders and her staff for getting all these items on. We were just notified of these additional eleven items, and then the twelfth item just today, so they did a tremendous amount of work to get all of this on the agenda, so I'd like to thank her and her staff for their hard work and dedication. You want to read all those again, please?
No, thank you.
Okay, give you a chance to catch your breath here. All right, committee report, item seventeen, committee report and consideration of a resolution for second reading.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one seven four, a resolution authorizing an economic development loan in the amount not to exceed five hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred twelve dollars to NSL Analytical Services Incorporated for purchase of test equipment for a facility located at four five three five Renaissance Parkway, Warrensville Heights, authorizing the deputy chief of staff of development or director of development to execute all documents consistent with said loan and this resolution.
This matter will be on for third reading adoption on October the ninth. Item eighteen, committee reports and consideration of resolution for second reading adoption under suspension of rules. We need a motion to suspend Rule ninety.
Motion to suspend Rule ninety.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discretion at suspending the rules? Also favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. We can go on to item zero one eight two.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight two, a resolution accepting the rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion on this?
Madam President.
Yes.
My colleagues, this is a routine resolution authorizing our standard tax levies, including the inside millage, the Health and Human Services, and the developmental disabilities levies. The portion of the one point four five inside millage devoted to debt service as opposed to operation goes up from point eight five to one point zero two mils. The increase is due to three factors. One is that we were using surplus funds in the debt service account, but they have mostly been spent down. Second is the anticipated issuance of general obligation bonds, and third is the reduction in property tax values due to reappraisal. I ask for your support of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, item zero one eight three.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight three, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires repair and resurfacing of Harvard Avenue from Newburgh Heights West Corporation Line to East Fifty-Fourth Street in the Village of Newburgh Heights, total estimated construction cost six hundred fifty thousand dollars, finding that special assessments will neither be levied nor collected to pay for any part of the county's costs of said improvement, and authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement of cooperation with said municipality in connection with said project.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Conwell. This matter has been to Public Works Committee. Any comment on this, Mr. Jones?
Madam President, this resolution is for the purpose of resurfacing Harvard Avenue from Newburgh Heights West Corporation Line to East Fifty-Fourth Street, again in the Village of Newburgh Heights. This road was last resurfaced back in nineteen ninety-five. The condition of the road was fair, and, again, a six hundred fifty thousand dollar project, and it's in an industrial area. Heavy truck traffic damages roads, so this is a critical road to be, to repair, and I ask for your support for it. It's funded one hundred percent by the County Road and Bridge Fund, so it's moving through the process expeditiously in compare, in comparison to federal fund, federally funded projects, so I do ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other comment? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item zero one eight four.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight four, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires rehabilitation of North Main Street Bridge Number zero zero point one two over the Chagrin River in the Village of Chagrin Falls, total estimated construction cost two million nine hundred thousand dollars, finding that special assessments will neither be levied nor collected to pay for any part of the county's costs of said improvement, and authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement of cooperation with said municipality in connection with said project.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion on this, anything on this, Mr. Jones?
Madam President, this project is a three million dollar, a rehabilitation of a bridge in Chagrin Falls, whereas the last project was about six hundred fifty thousand dollars. This one's a little more expensive, and it is federally funded eighty percent and twenty percent by a county road and bridge project fund. This project will not start until twenty seventeen. When using federal dollars, there are a little more bureaucracy you have to go through, and you plan a little further out in advance to, for these type of projects. So again, it will start in twenty seventeen. The condition of the road, of the bridge also was fair condition, and I ask for your support on this project.
Any other discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item zero one eight five.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight five, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires resurfacing of Sprague Road from Broadview Road to State Road in the cities of Broadview Heights, North Royalton, and Parma, total estimated construction cost one million five hundred fifty thousand dollars, finding that special assessments will neither be levied nor collected to pay for any part of the county's costs of said improvement, and authorizing the county executive to enter into agreements of cooperation with said municipalities in connection with said project.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. German and seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion on this?
And Madam President, this also is a one point five million dollar project. It's a collaboration between Broadview Heights, North Royalton, and Parma. The project was initiated when the city of Parma decided to replace, do sewer work. North Royalton joined in and has taken the lead on this road project. The road was last resurfaced back in nineteen eighty-seven, and the road condition was fair, and it was a loan on this road project initiated by the cities. They went through the state, OPWC dollars, and this loan is a zero percent interest rate over ten years, and the county, again, has contributed thirty, seventy percent to this project. The city's thirty percent. So I ask for your support on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item zero one eight six.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight six, a resolution granting above-ground and underground standard easements for electric facilities to City of Cleveland for installing, constructing, reconstructing, operating, supplementing, repairing, maintaining, relocating, removing, and renewing underground electric lines consisting of cable, ducts, conduits, fixtures, equipment, and appliances, and such other underground electric facilities as are deemed necessary or convenient for the purpose of distributing electricity located on or above certain property located on the eastern side of and below the Brooklyn-Brighton Bridge, abutting Old Pearl Road, Cleveland, permanent parcel numbers zero one four two four zero zero nine and zero one four two three nine nine nine, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents required in connection with said easements and consistent with this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion on this one?
I'd like to have my name in.
Ms. Conwell's name too, please.
Madam President, this, the primary goal of this project is to assist CPP in the deliverance of electrical services. In order for CPP to do this, there are two parcels that the county owns that, that surround the railroad tracks, and the city of Cleveland needs this, needs access to these two parcels to, again, deliver electrical services. I am asking that we provide this permanent easement to the city of Cleveland, specifically Cleveland Public Power, for the, again, the purpose of delivering these electrical services. There is no cost involved, no compensation, because this is a public utility. Again, I recommend this for approval.
All right, any discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item zero one eight seven.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight seven, a resolution making an award on requisition number two four five nine seven to Endpoint Technologies Sales Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed three million five hundred seventy-seven thousand seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents for a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement for products and services for the period June thirty, two thousand twelve through June twenty-nine, two thousand seventeen, and authorizing the county executive to execute the contract and all other documents consistent with said award and this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. German. Any discussion on this?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Miller?
My colleagues, this agreement is a major part of the administration's strategic plan for IT improvement over the next several years. In the past, Cuyahoga County IT departments purchased Microsoft licenses on an individual basis. This resulted in many different versions of Microsoft licenses being used throughout the county, causing difficulty in managing both PCs and servers. This new Microsoft Enterprise contract is intended to bundle a common software license agreement across all county agencies, allowing for a greater discount in license fees and a more efficient way to procure Microsoft products. In addition, this contract will allow our IT department to upgrade all PCs and servers with the latest version of Microsoft products, making the county more current in technology. This type of Microsoft agreement is very common in large organizations and is used in other states, counties, and cities, such as the state of Ohio Franklin County and the city of Cleveland. The IT department is very anxious to get started in taking advantage of this Microsoft agreement to complete IT consolidation and modernization efforts across county agencies, and therefore have requested approval on second reading, and I ask for your support.
Any other discussion or questions?
I'd like to have my name in.
And Ms. Conwell's name, please. All's in favor.
Madam President, there were some questions that were asked, I think during the initial presentation, about what upgrades of other PCs and things of that nature, and I think that was going to be addressed. I thought as far as what, what other equipment was going to be able to utilize this, and how many, what was the percentage of PCs that were not going to be able to utilize the upgraded software without doing, and I didn't, don't recall getting a response to that.
Jeff Maury, Chief Information Officer. So we have approximately about seven hundred PCs in the total count of the PCs that we have in the county that don't look like they would be able to take advantage of the initial upgrade to the latest version of Microsoft. So what we'll be bringing forward to you is a procurement for new PCs as part of our capital refresh plan to upgrade those that are not upgradable with the latest version of Microsoft.
So percentage of total is?
It's out of about five thousand, so it's.
Okay, so we're looking at about fifteen, twelve to fifteen percent. Are they going to have to be upgraded just to be able to utilize this, what we're procuring tonight?
Any other discussion on this item? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Item zero one eight eight.
Resolution number two thousand twelve zero one eight eight, a resolution authorizing an amendment to contract number CE zero nine hundred six zero four with Starting Point for administration of various initiatives of the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Program for the Invest in Children program for the period August one, two thousand nine through July thirty-one, two thousand eleven, to extend the time period to July thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, to change the scope of services effective August first, two thousand twelve, and for additional funds in the amount of five hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, authorizing the county executive to execute the amendment and all other documents consistent with this resolution, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move approval.
A move by Mr. Brady and seconded by Mr. Miller. All right, any discussion on this?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
This contract amends an existing contract with Starting Point, the state's designated childcare resource and referral agency in Cuyahoga County. Starting Point administers the management information. Starting Point administers the management information system for all universal prekindergarten sites. The additional funds are needed because the county's UPK fund sites grew from 27 to 36 this year, and this is 100% funded by Health and Human Service Levy Funds. I ask for approval by the council.
Any other questions or discussions? All's in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Item 0189. This matter is on the agenda, but at the request of the administration, we're going to hold this item. Moving on to Item 19, Consideration of an Ordinance for First Reading and Referral to Committee.
Ordinance Number 2012-0029, an ordinance authorizing the renaming of the Division of Employment and Family Services, Cuyahoga Support Enforcement Agency, to Cuyahoga Job and Family Services, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Can I go to Health and Human Services? Item 20, Committee Reports and Consideration of Ordinance for Second Reading Adoption under Suspension of Rules, we need a motion to suspend Rule 9D.
To suspend the rule.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher to suspend the rules. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item 0027.
Ordinance Number 2012-0027, an ordinance authorizing the renaming of the Cuyahoga County Urban Area Working Group to the Cuyahoga County Emergency Services Advisory Board, authorizing said board to establish and amend its bylaws to comply with mandates of the Ohio Vice Code and to update membership of the board, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion on this item? All's in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Item 0028.
Ordinance Number 2012-0028, an ordinance authorizing the renaming of the Cuyahoga Regional Information System Advisory Board to the Regional Enterprise Data Sharing System Advisory Board, authorizing said board to establish and amend its bylaws to comply with mandates of the Ohio Vice Code and to update membership of the board, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion on this item? All's in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it. All right, Item 21, miscellaneous committee reports.
Madam President, Finance and Budget had a really big day today. We've got county business preference, we've got dog licenses, we've got land bank parcel, and we've got a whole lot of bonds. And Councilman Schron has graciously consented to switch places with economic development with finance, because the Economic Development Committee is expected to be relatively short. And so, that means that this coming Monday, we're going to meet at 1:30 PM, a half hour after our usual time after the Economic Development Committee.
Are you providing lunch?
And there might be a few things show up that day.
All right, anything else under miscellaneous committee reports?
President? I'm jealous. I usually get all the committee working now. I got one item. But this Thursday, we will have a committee meeting, and we will not deal with the item presented today, but we will deal with the legislation administration that's brought forward regarding debarment. So, we will be dealing with misconduct of companies and the contractors and the potential need for debaring them from working with the county. So, it's a lot of work. So, I decided to open this up and invite all of council for this Thursday. Committee time will be from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. So, again, just inviting all of council who is able to attend to deal with this particular item.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I had an opportunity to review that, and it raises a lot of issues, so it's going to be a lot of discussion on that one. Any other, Mr. Ray?
Besides the fact that the Health and Human Service Committee will be meeting and taking up the business that's been introduced, I'd like to encourage anyone who's interested and has the time to perhaps attend the land bank meeting this Friday at 10 o'clock. And there's going to be a big presentation that I think would be very good for people who are interested in this issue, and that's down here on Lakeside Avenue. And what is the exact address? Did Gus leave? Oh, well, we'll get it to you on there. We'll email it to you.
Okay, anybody else?
The Human Resources Appointment and Equity Committee will be held October 4th at 9:30, a change of time, half hour earlier, but I'd like to ask anyone from the Human Resource Department, the item that was mentioned tonight, is it a time constraint on that? It was about the health benefits, because I have a tight schedule for that day.
Yes, to the chair, to the, yes, least the Department of Human Resources. It is on a tight time schedule. These are usually the ones that you do with, under suspension of rules, after the committee looks at it.
So, there's a time constraint on that?
That's correct.
Right. So, we'll try to get all that in on Thursday, October 4th. If I have Public Works that meets after, we'll give me some gracious extra time. I've already moved the meeting up 9:30.
All right, anything else?
Yes. President, we don't have a date or time scheduled for the environment sustainability, but I'd like to talk to the committee members and Mr. Jones of potentially having a joint meeting on Thursday, October 4th. So, I'll follow up with you and the members of the committee and see if we can do that.
All right, any miscellaneous business?
Madam Chair, I would just like to reiterate that on October 4th, I might want to open that up to all council members, because that will be the Charter Review Commission that will be appointed, so I invite everyone to come out, because that is important. Thank you.
And did we get a clerk appointed? I was out of the country also. Were you supposed to designate a person as the clerk?
I guess we also have...
Okay. We'll appoint somebody if you don't want to appoint him.
Public Works.
Okay. Okay. Anything, any other matter from council, then we'll move on to Item 23, Public Comment Unrelated to the Agenda, and we had some ladies here, and are they still here?
Kelly Schaefer. Fran Mench.
We chased him away? Okay. In that case, we will go back to Item 15 for executive session. All means of Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the Ohio Meetings Law. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside of the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matter in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This evening, council will go into executive session to discuss a matter regarding collective bargaining. During this time, our live stream will be down, and we will ask all those not specifically needed for the executive session to leave council chambers. Anyone may re-enter the meeting once the executive session is ended. Is there, ladies and gentlemen, please? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of dealing with a collective bargaining matter?
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Germana. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Moving to executive session. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Say yes.
Yes.
Mr. Germana?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schron?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Come back, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Greenspan?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes, the ayes have it, and we will go into executive session. And please clear council chambers.